All right. We're going to kind of order. We're going to start with public audience here. So anybody who would like to speak. We ask that you state your name, your address, your three minutes to speak. If there are none residents here, you'd like to have the residents come up first, please, just to say a personal thing. And we're ready when you are. Would you ask that you keep your mask on?
I can't, I have a disability. Hi, my name is Shannon McLean. I'm from Two Hays Road in Terreboro, Connecticut. I'm here to express my frustrations and concerns over your decision to comply with mask mandates for our children. You have hid behind excuses for too long. You have the power to make masks optional for our children. Student to staff transmission is non-existent. Staff to staff transmission, however, accounts for most all of the COVID cases in schools. Teachers and staff should have to bear any burden during an outbreak. This virus is not a pandemic. But if you must force anyone to wear masks, it should always be the adults, not my five and seven-year-old children. The mask should have always been optional for them. This board believes my children's health is their responsibility. I'm here to tell you, you are not and will never be responsible for making health decisions for my children. With no science to support your decisions, you blindly follow Parkton Valley Health Department. This isn't about public health. It's about fear and control. Under the guise of public health, you have shamefully allowed my children to be part of your political gaslight. If it were about public health, you would have to hire more staff and administration to teach and enforce proper dawning and adopting PDE that has been fit-tested for every individual. I want to know, when my children get sick, mentally and physically sick and wearing masks you forced on them, who maintains liability? You personally? Simmsbury Town? Parkton Valley Health? Connecticut Department of Public Health? Or Governor LaMans? You say your hands are tied. You want my children to continue to suffer irreversible damage to their overall health and spiritual being because you believe government officials and agencies and take their guidance as gospel. I'm convinced you are living in an alternate reality. Those government officials and agencies have lost all credibility. I'm here to tell you, so the science shows masks for children have zero effectiveness. They are effective, however, at decreasing children's blood oxygen level by 20 or more percent. They are effective at creating CO2 buildup. They are effective at creating and trapping bacteria, fungi, staph. They are effective at maintaining fear in the mind and spirit of my children. No guidance, no executive lawyer order, no lawyer intimidation can trump our constitutional laws. You are submitting to rules that segregate and dismantle people and put them against each other. You have said repeatedly you are not health officials. Well, I'll tell you who else you are. You are my daughter's mother, father, legal guardian. You do not know what's best for my children. You have zero authority over my children with these mandates. It goes against their religion and their God-given constitutional rights. You have sacrificed the social, emotional, psychological development of my children by altering focus. And I do not need to prove to you that masks and kids just don't work. You have a brain and access to internet. And I call you to be brave enough to say no to mask mandates. These decisions should be of parental choice. I demand masks to be optional.
Hello, my name is Monica Littredge. I have three children. And I'm here on the board, and I oppose the mandate on 105. The mandate for masks on children. I think that should be left for the choice of parents and nobody else. Since Raytown is 90% COVID vaccinated, I don't know what the town's in great, what else, what else the town could do. Any adult 65 or over is 100% vaccinated. So I think everybody has done their part. I understand that the town is under strict guidance from the governor. But now, whenever that finishes September 30th, I hope that effective masks are meant away from that. Or my children, my children have gotten an appetite. Oh, my children are scared to raise their hand because they are afraid they're not going to be heard. So they have to leave themselves multiple times and it's not safe for them. The children have to wear masks outside while Eric Blum and some other people outside for ice creams and baking teachers, they're right next to each other without masks. But the children have to be, they can't be next to each other wearing, without wearing a mask, outside when it was 95 degrees in Maine. It's not fair for them. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Mickey Copel. I live at 9 High Press Drive. My daughter will be entering third grade at Toon Hills. I actually grew up in the Simmsbury school system and have always been really proud of our town. But today, I stand here before you telling you that the system is failing our children. The masks don't work. It even says it on the box. Our kids don't wear them properly. They create bacteria that is harmful for our children to breathe in daily. They create fear, they create anxiety, and they stunt the social development of our children. I understand why we used them in the beginning. We didn't know what we were up against. But the CDC shows us that chances of a child surviving COVID are 99.97% survivable under the age of 18. Adults and the sick and vulnerable can protect themselves now with the vaccine. So why are we still masking our children? May I remind you, our kids have been maskless all summer. They have been to the pool, they've been camping, they've been to movies, they've been to hotels, they've been on vacations, they've been on planes, they've been to church, they've been to dinners and restaurants, they've been to sleepovers, and they've been to barbecues. Also, may I point out that I saw several teachers out and about enjoying Usain Freedom during the summer. I actually took pictures and my husband made me delete them. Does COVID only exist in our school? Because it didn't exist at Obama's party. It didn't exist at Nancy Pelosi's party. Our children are being used as political pawns. The school system is not following science. I don't want school COVID funding going towards the use of isolating my only child. School is a social aspect for her as she is an only child. It is time to stand up. This is getting crazy. The flu has continued to kill children year after year with a vaccine in place. And what did we do then? We sent our kids to school. We didn't panic, we didn't create fear. We didn't stop them from socializing. We didn't cancel sports. So why are we doing it now? I am in the pharmaceutical industry and I wear a mask in the hospital where people are sick and vulnerable. However, in a school where the students are at low risk and the teachers have the option to be vaccinated, I ask you again, why are we masking our children? It should be optional, it should not be mandatory. As a parent, I should be able to make the decisions that affect my children and their mental and physical health. I want my daughter to know that as her mom, I am in her corner and I am fighting for her freedom to smile. How sad is that? Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Is there anything else to say? Okay, I would be happy to just say a few things because I don't want you to know. So I think that Your name, your address? My name is Marty Jack Kowalski. I'm at 26 Cornham Road. I think the woman before me said it perfectly and eloquently. But I just want to piggyback on that, that I really applaud what Simmsbury Public Schools did last year. I think that compared to other school districts, we succeeded in a lot of ways. But I implore this group to continue to make forward progress for our children and continue to do better for our children. At Toon Hills Public School last year, I understand, which is where my daughter goes, children wore masks at recess. I don't understand why that was necessary and I didn't know until the end of the school year that that was one of the only schools, if not the only school, who did that. I also received an email this week from the school saying that my child could be picked up by somebody, could be picked up by a friend, but not for a social reason. I think that's an infringement on privacy and I don't think that parents should accept that kind of messaging from the school. It's none of the school's business, what my daughter does after school and she's off of school grounds. So I am just standing here, like many of the other folks here, trying to advocate for our children and just imploring them to do better for our kids and continue to push for their health and wellbeing. The school is, it's an important social environment, like the woman before me said. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Southern Hampshire Lake. That's Mariah, but I'm sure she'll come if she wants to.
I would say Putin, but
That's her, that's her.
I came to work earlier about the mental health and
Mommy, can I talk about guide stories?
And I know it's just a mask. And I know, we all know that there's emotional and social issues with it and the psychiatric and 525 and care about in their article on 63. The Senate Bill 2 established an Office of Child Advocate and a Suicide Advisory Board that's going to start July 1st, 2022. Of course, that's in the future, so that's not really a whole right now. And then on June 22nd, 2021, they wanted to do surveys to assess mental health. There was also an article on August 20th from New York Magazine, who said that masks were not very effective. And I just want to read a little bit from that article. Says, "Many American, peer nations around the world, including the UK, Ireland, all of Scandinavia, France, Netherlands, Switzerland, and Italy, have exempted kids with varying age cutoffs from wearing masks in classrooms. Consistently, there's no evidence of more outbreaks in schools in those countries relative to the schools in the US, where the solid majority of kids who wore masks are entirely academic year and will continue to do so for the foreseeable future. These countries, along with the World Health Organizations, whose child mask and guidance differs substantially from CDC's recommendations, have explicitly recognized a decision to mask students carries with it potential academic and social harm for children and may lack their benefits to date." I know, nobody wants sick kids. But kids are not dying from this. There's provisional and it's 361, 430 kids, whatever. That's out of 74.2 million children have fallen so ill that they've not, they die. And I know, I don't want, I don't wish a dead child to anybody. But in Connecticut, there are roughly 30,000 deaths per year. And I looked at 2016, 2017, 2018, and 2019. They have yet published 2020 numbers. And I have a feeling that they're holding those back, but I can't, I can't speculate on that because I'm not sure. I've never looked at it. And of those 30,000 deaths, from 5 to 19, there's average about 100 kids that die. Every year, 20 kids die from suicide. And I know in my heart that 2020, that number is double. In addition to that, 10 people every year die from homicide. Again, same age group, only schoolchildren. Another 10 will die from drug overdoses. Kids die, they are not dying of COVID. This is not to protect them.
I keep my mask on, it's the rules. All right, Mike Park, 12 Wald Road. First of all, I just want to thank the board. I know these aren't easy times and you guys have done a lot of good work. I do know, you know, this is political. You look at some of the states that are doing what they're doing and what Connecticut is doing, it's unfortunate, but that's just a reality. Politics and everything. But the three things that I ask, where you all have the power, hopefully you do have the power at some point, for local control, which I think is where it should be. You guys are handcuffed. Just make masks optional. That's the one thing I ask for. The second one is no vaccine mandates for kids. This is an emergency use authorization drug. I know it was full FDA approved on Monday for anyone over 18. But still, people are very skeptic. I think vaccination is very important. But I also think it's, you know, it's a personal decision. And as you get older, co-warbed, obese, it's a risk management item you have to do for yourself. And again, I understand kids come in different shapes and sizes and health, so I do understand that as well. And the last thing I ask is just no mask testing of healthy kids. Cases, as we can see, as anyone's been paying attention to Denmark, they're not looking at cases anymore. They're looking at hospitalization, severe illness, and death. And they actually just announced that they're not going to have masks, even on mass transit anymore. Because as we all know, who's been paying attention, this will be endemic. People absolutely disagree with one and speakers. It's a pandemic. I mean, this is a pandemic. This is dangerous to a section of our population and to most people. But the great thing is, and we should be celebrating this, not our kids. I mean, there's been four deaths in Connecticut. It's horrible, any death of a kid is horrible. I think the number is about 350 have died out of 75 million in the United States. It's horrible, but 3,000 kids under 19 have died of suicide. I mean, I had someone very close to me in my family who spent a year at a college and his senior year got wrecked. He couldn't go to, couldn't go to college. He's a beautiful musician. And he went downhill, ended up, you know, I just attended his in-urnment because he died. And it's really, and it's a direct result of some of the things, some of the controls, some of the necessary, a lot of them are not for kids. And, you know, those three things, on top of that, it's just common sense. We all go to work, we wear a mask, didn't work. And then we sit down, we take off our masks. We go to eat, we walk into the restaurant, we sit down, we take off our masks. So at least if the kids can take off their mask when they're today. I mean, that's, that's the sort of common sense that I'm just asking for. When you guys have the power, you know, because in Simmsbury, we're leaders and a lot of smart people here, and I know you all want to do the right thing. So thank you very much again. Appreciate it, you're all volunteers, and appreciate it, thank you.
Robert Hensley. You know my address? 20 Fox Den, West End. I think that it's just, one thing that we all need to kind of think about is, one, I do feel that there's a urge to try to normalize wearing a mask. I don't understand it. It doesn't make any sense to me. Masks don't work. I think there's no science behind that. The vaccination rate in Simmsbury is very high. Don't understand the mandate that came in a couple of days ago. And so I think one of the things that we all need to kind of realize is, what is the end goal here? What are we wearing masks? Is there, is there a number we're trying to get to? Is there a date we're doing this for? So I urge us all to just think about, what's the end game here? Are we just going to do this for the rest of our lives? Because again, this is not normal behavior. And I just feel that that's an important thing to think about when we're having these mandates, so to speak.
You know, actually, I'll speak really quick. I don't have too much time. I'm a volunteer, five-year-old, in West End. And I can't imagine the stress of everybody's under having these decisions. I know they're not easy and up there with me, that everybody that's opposing it. I don't have all the fancy stats from the people before me and vaccination rates and all that, I don't. What I do have is a point of view that we specifically want to Simmsbury or the school system. And it does upset me that I don't even have the right to kind of, you know, parents are a lot with schools. We're not even obviously in classrooms. Now we can't decide whether to mask or not. And you know, it's upsetting. It's a very emotional time. You know, you have to get vaccine, you have to provide your proof to everybody, you have to wear your mask everywhere you go. And we're all doing that. We're all compliant. We're doing everything we're asked. But this is kind of where we have to draw the line, I think. I mean, kids aren't super spreaders. You know, they're like the lady in the comments that the survival rate is 99.97%. Kids are dying from worse things than this, though. I know this is awful. And I just ask you to give us the choice. You know, I know my kids very, very well. They don't have underlying illnesses. They are, they're immune, they've been in daycare since they were five months old. So their immune systems are rock solid. And I really feel that they would, you know, it's my choice, I know them. I actually have to say that even though my son got over his illness very sick, this past year, he's actually been sicker than he's ever been. The most, like he's gotten sick more often than he ever has before. I don't know if it's for masks or not. But what I can tell you is that his mask has been on the bathroom floor, where he's had to pick it up and put it back on his face. It's been outside on the playground. It's been in the hallway where they all walk into daycare because they're required. You know, kids don't take the same care of mask wearing as we adults do. They're not as careful. Everybody knows toddler is dirty. I mean, I feel like they, you know, they have more, they're more susceptible to getting all those germs on them than they are if they're just free of spreading it to each other. So, you know, please just think about it. You can fight with the kids. It's the fight for the nutrition.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? No, but thank you for listening. There will be another opportunity. Okay, with that said, we are Oh, I forgot, I'm so sorry. We do have a letter to read yet, yes.
Dear members of the Board of Education, My name is Megan Myers and I live at 425 Bushy Hill Road, Simmsbury, Connecticut, 06070. Let me begin by thanking you for volunteering your time to serve our community. I write to you regarding mask mandates in our schools. I'm a parent of two students in the Simmsbury Public Schools. I am also a licensed clinical social worker providing psychotherapy to children, adolescents, and adults in our surrounding communities. My daughter Rory, age 11, will be entering Peter James. My son Grayson, age 7, will be a second grader at Toon Hills. Neither of them is eligible for vaccination. I recognize the profound impact COVID has had on our community. I work every day with folks experiencing trauma and anxiety related to the pandemic. My heart goes out to those of us who have lost loved ones, have suffered economic hardships, and have had their lives upended. I am beyond grateful that COVID has spared our children from significant medical harm. We are so blessed that this is a virus that poses very little physical risk to our youth. I would like to speak of the social, emotional risks to our children of mask mandates. Young children learn through play and social interaction. They need to be able to see faces to pick up on social cues, understand how to read emotions, and learn to communicate effectively. Masking our young children has not been proven to prevent the spread of COVID. We are anecdotally told that masks are generally well-tolerated and that our children are amazingly resilient. However, a review of the research concluded that containment measures such as masking have negatively impacted the mental health and well-being of children and adolescents. Anxiety, depression, disturbance in sleep, and appetite are as what, excuse me, as well as impairment in social interactions are the most common presentation. Let's find out from some of our kids. I asked Rory, my 11-year-old, one of your students, how masks at school impact her. Here's what she had to say. "I don't like wearing masks at school because it makes it so hard to breathe and at the end of the day, I sometimes get overheated and have headaches. I also can't see my friends or teachers' faces when talking to them or seeing them in school. It also makes it harder for teachers to tell who's talking. I'm constantly worried about if my mask is on right and I'm adjusting it. I'm focusing more on the mask than on my schoolwork." My seven-year-old Grayson shared, "I can't hear people and I don't know who is talking sometimes. I really hate these masks. My ears hurt when I have to wear them a lot." "Our children have been mask-free since school let out. We have been to museums, restaurants, arcades, retail stores, movie theaters, and concerts. We have had vacations with other families, allowed sleepovers, and have freely gathered indoors and out. I believe that we are a community of well-educated parents who deserve to make medical decisions on behalf of our children. I believe that reasonable people can disagree and engage in civil debate. I have good friends on both sides of the issue. I would like each of us to be able to make the choices that are best for our children. You have the ability to stand up for our children and families in our community by making masks optional. Make this decision based on facts, not fear. COVID is here to stay. How long will we force our children to bear the burden?"
So now we're on to committee reports and board communication.
I just wanted to, a couple of things. Thank you for coming out and thank you for the way you presented this evening. That means a lot. You know, I think when we were in June at the end of the closing of the school year, beginning of July, when we started to communicate, I think we all thought we were, we were done with this, you know? You know, and honestly, that we were back to that conversation of it being optional seemed very real at the time. And I put that out in my documents. Now we have concerns that we're discussing, certainly with the Delta. I'm not going to get into the data because you guys know the data. So I'm not going to lecture with the data back at you. But what I think is really important, I think, Mr. Hensley, you were getting at this a little bit, is if decision-making changes, we still need to be in alignment with the people we work with that provide health advice to us. And I think we all need to be a little more effective in deciding what metrics we're going to talk about, how we're going to make those decisions, you know? And I, we've had, my team has had those conversations with Parkton Valley as of today. You know, that certainly this case rate over the last four weeks is, you know, it's threefold gone in the direction we don't want to see it going. But it will subside and when it does, one of the markers we're looking at is the positivity that we're concerned with, what's the activity in the school. So I don't want you to think that those comments about data are falling on deaf ears. But it's also important, I think, to recognize that we've made all these decisions in alignment with these groups. And we don't plan to just break free from the groups. We need to continue to work better quantifying how we make these decisions. But, you know, coming back to school should be a super exciting time. And I know we're going to talk about, we had our new teachers in today and it had a great vibe. We have about 35 people coming into the organization and we're super excited. But we also recognize the stress of some of these decisions. And quite honestly, I get contacted equally with the other point of view as a board member. So we're really trying to balance out those decision-making for the health and safety of the kids and for the continuity of staying in school. You know, we have, we have regs and rules we have to follow in other areas such as quarantine. So I think all those things need to be discussed as this situation evolves. But, you know, I always say, I'm very, I'm very proud to be the superintendent of this district. You know, we have incredibly committed teachers, we have well-informed parents, and we have great kids. So it was an example of that tonight and I appreciate how you came out and the way that you did. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to committee reports and board communications. So Sharon, let's start with me.
So a couple of things. One, we attended the county leadership conference on August 5th. And at the time, we attended the county leadership conference on August 5th. And it was a really good conference. Myself, Susan, and Lydia were able to come. Jeff was going to join us, but work overtook Really well-intended. At the time, interim commissioner, Sharon Um, at the time, interim commissioner, Shelley Russell Tupper, was there. And she spoke a lot about, um, some of the diversity and, um, social emotional learning initiatives that are out. She also spoke about the S-3. Um, and then, um, Pave spoke about, um, their diversity initiative. And then they also invited, um, another speaker to just talk to us about, um, social, it was, if we sat, it was self-care.
Self-care.
It was self-care.
About self-care.
For, for us board members.
Right.
Um, and so really, really a good, um, good meeting. One of the things I do want to bring up, um, we were asked whether or not we have a equity policy in place. Um, so I think we need to work on getting an equity policy in place. If we don't have one, we have a equity statement in place. Um, and I think it was thought that we have a policy. So that was one thing. All right. Um, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is, um, wanted to make sure that we can get an update on the status of, from whole business, the status of our climate today. So.
So that's something that we are discussing, we were discussing it to go through the Equity Council so that we could have a wider berth of community outreach as to what community would like us to do. And we just, given the rise of the pandemic and all the things that have changed, and we have not handled that just yet. So, uh, we are, it's not dead, but we just haven't moved it forward yet because of summer and because they have to, we have to find the place, the right place and the right avenue to bring that forward.
So that was the outcome from Matt? That was the last time.
We would, I discussed it with Matt, and I would very much like to get community input on making that change because many districts have made that change at the board level and are backpedaling. And so I'd like to get community input before we do something like that.
Okay. All right. So, and then, um, last, I think, just the, that's the only thing on it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Brian.
No committee reports.
Yeah.
Nothing tonight, just fired up to be back. Okay, ready to go, son?
And that's a fire. When you're back, I'm back. And I, and again, I want to reiterate what Matt said. I mean, I think it's, it's a very difficult time for all of us and we all have, everything is supercharged emotionally. And I really am appreciative of how thoughtful and kind your comments were tonight. And they are on deaf ears, and we are just trying to do what's best for everybody.
Um, I don't have any committee, but I wanted to share a positive, um, just because I do feel like these are lots of negative. Now, the, um, the high school, um, today, and I don't know if every parent knows this or, or not, but in the past, I have not known that we had reached out to all new, um, students, not just the ninth grade command, but all students. And we had ambassadors from the school who helped introduce and take tours and give people sort of the, the one-on-one time, which I thought was really nice. Um, and the kids seemed really positive about it. So I thought that was a good start.
Great. Thanks for the good question. Mr. Bjork.
Yeah, I want to kind of, uh, piggyback off of, uh, some things that other folks had said. You know, a lot of people will act, they'll, they'll see on the news, they'll see on TV, um, horrible pictures about boards of ed and some of the things that go on. And they say, you know, how can you, how can you, you know, handle the type of do this? But this town and the civility and the passion and I've, I've always thought that as tough as it can be sometimes as a board member to hear things, um, you have to hear them. And it's the public audience and it's having people come and talk to us directly, which I learn a lot from. And I really appreciate the passion and the civility that you brought to, to the conversation. So, thank you.
Uh, sure. I'll just, uh, go one step further than Mr. Curtis, who did mention our new teacher orientation that started today. We were in the new media center in Henry James with over thirty folks who are new certified staff, um, at, uh, in the Simsbury Public Schools. Um, at least one in every school but Terrifield. No hiring at Terrifield this year, but, uh, in all the other schools, some new staff members coming. Um, we're a little over thirty because a number of the people that we hired were sort of post-orientation last year. So some of them were kind of catching up to orientation. Um, but when all of a sudden then we'll, uh, in the presentation that I'll do in, uh, September, we have right around thirty new, uh, new certified staff members. Very exciting. Uh, the, our tag team of Lumpy and Sullivan highlighted Simsbury in every way we could. Uh, and the tour, uh, on the bus was, uh, successful and ended at Tall Meadow instead of Jay Foster's this time. So, uh, thank you to Tall Meadow for taking us in and, uh, and, uh, ending our day with a treat. So thank you to everybody. And two more days for our teachers, another kind of planned program tomorrow. And then Thursday is their really time, their time to work, um, themselves and get ready for next week.
Mrs. Lumpy, while I can't see you, I know you're there.
Here I am. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Um, Mr. Curtis?
No, nothing, um, overly specific. It was, um, a, a great day, as Neil said. It's one, it's one of my favorite days of organization. We talked about, uh, Simsbury, we talked about, uh, bringing talent into the organization, serving our community, and we got off to a good start. Um, I think some interesting things that, um, Neil and Sue will report on tonight. You know, our enrollment, we're seeing a pretty significant increase in our enrollment. And, uh, we've had to react to that. And Neil will show what that looks like in terms of, uh, various schools and where the enrollment increases are hidden. And one of the main topics last year we talked about was when the school year ends, what programs are we going to put in place, uh, to mitigate learning loss and support for kids? Um, so Sue's going to do, uh, a program at the various levels. Just talk through some of our summer programming, some of what we have in fall, because I know that was a very important part of what the board wanted to hear from us as a new group. So I think we have some really good information to share tonight.
Thank you. Um, and for my piece, I would like to thank you all very much. We have heard time carried within the last two weeks, four games that had to be canceled, those are people removed. So I thank you all for your kindness, civility, and, um, not so personal effects. We do appreciate it. With that said, I need approval of the minutes of our June eighth regular meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June eighth.
And a second, please. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Was any, oh, I didn't ask if there are any changes, so I'm going to go with the fact of the bill. Good. You know, I'm a little out of practice. It's the first one. Um, approval of the minutes of the June twenty-third special meeting. Motion on that, please. And a second. Any changes or discussion? Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Where do we have our minutes? Approval of the minutes of the June twenty-third, uh, special meeting, that's twice. That's a different discussion. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I get a motion on that, please.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve.
Bye, Jen. Um, any changes to that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And child nutrition program authorization, signature change.
Um, so this is for our child nutrition program. Um, as part of the conservative program, where we advanced a portion of our breakfast and lunch sales by the state of Connecticut. And for the figures that we have for the, um, national school lunch program, we also have to submit various reports that the signatories have. Um, so this agreement allows approved individual, individuals to sign off, um, names specifically. So right now, the superintendent is listed as a signatory along with our retired school business manager, Bert Lepre. Um, so right now, they are authorized signers. For the retirement of the school business manager, the signatories need to be updated. And part of the state's process for updating the signatories is that it must go before the Board of Education, um, and they have to take formal action. So tonight, we're requesting that we maintain superintendent at the signatory. And we remove, um, the retired school business manager, Bert Lepre, and then we add me, um, for signing authority, finance director.
So, uh, can someone read that motion?
I move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorize the following signature changes associated with the agreement of the child nutrition programs. Maintain signing authority to the superintendent, Matt Curtis. Eliminate signing authority to the school business manager, Bert Lepre. Adding signing authority to finance director, Amy Meriwether.
Second, please. All of us in favor?
There's always something. This one always comes back to us.
Yeah.
Just saying.
All right. So now we're on to information reports.
And does it have to name people by name or can it just go by position?
No, it's name.
It changes that all.
It's name.
Um, okay, so back to school report.
You gonna go right to me, Matt?
I am going to go right to you, Neil.
Around the pole.
All right.
All right. So, um, just a few minutes. Uh, obviously, you, the board comes to expect an enrollment report each fall, but I wanted to show you some of the summer challenges that we have had with, uh, enrollment. I know some cohorts have been, uh, growing over the course of the summer. Um, I was copied on a lot of correspondence with all of you from some parent advocates who were asking us to add teachers in certain places because they knew their classes were getting bigger. I, uh, responded on your behalf to many of those.
We appreciate it.
Um, and just wanted to kind of show you where we stand right now. So I took this as of last Friday. Every Friday during the summer, our enrollment transportation coordinator, Laura Schellman, gives me, um, uh, three different kinds of reports to look at, uh, the way enrollment is trending in Simsbury. And, um, what, what you can see right now is that our projection from last, uh, year, we had Malona McBrum total had four thousand and twenty students projected. We are, uh, with two weeks to go, already thirty-six students above that at four thousand and fifty-six, um, total students. Um, and you can see kind of where it is, um, uh, most notable in town. Um, and it's a change of story, really, when we've been talking about Latimer Lane and the pressure at Latimer Lane. Um, that actually did not come through luckily, um, for us in terms of where the pressure, um, fell this summer. Um, Central School is quite unique, and you'll see quite a few classes that were added at Central School. Central always goes through, their, their population is always teetering between, is it two teachers per grade level or is it going to be three teachers per grade level? And it sits on a very delicate balance for many, many, uh, years of like making that decision. And this is the year that they sort of all balanced toward three teachers per grade level in a way that Central School hasn't seen in, in quite some time. So even though it isn't a remarkably large, remarkably larger number of students with just seventeen students, they fell at just the right grade levels to sort of tip some of our classes over. I will also say that, um, some of you will remember that last year I reported that the ridge at Talcott Mountain has a new large property in, uh, Simsbury on Route ten. Um, we made the decision that even though it was geographically in the Latimer area, that our central buses actually went very close on its southern route. The, the central buses go all the way to Abigail's. And we asked the central buses to go a little further down to the ridge at Talcott Mountain. And there really are quite a few kids coming to Central School from that complex. Um, that, that, I'll give you a full report in September. But, um, it is definitely over a dozen kids elementary just from that complex that are coming. So that's a, that's a key number in, um, why I think these are changing. Squadron, um, the, the, the real estate is moving in the northern end of town. And you can see twenty-eight more, um, students than projected. Um, and, and, uh, even though it didn't impact classes in terms of needing more teachers, Terrifield is actually doing pretty well in terms of, um, relative increase. So I would not say anything, uh, remarkable about either Henry James or Simsbury High School. Those are, you know, that did not, that did not change our staffing in any way. I would expect, um, given the way enrollments are coming in, that will be even more than thirty-six over projection by the time I give you a final report.
Yeah, okay. Stop it. Sure. You knew I was going to ask this question. Um, just with Squadron, um, just, do we have the space? Does it create any?
So, you know, size issues, I mean, because it's already, they're already significant as it is.
Yeah. Any, any, does it create any issues?
We, we don't have space, um, at Squadron. It is really quite tight over there. Um, and I think one of the things we need to look at as we go into the fall is a couple of things. Whether, um, a minor redistricting to shift some folks to Terrifield School, whether we pick a complex or a couple of streets that would, um, relieve some of that pressure on Squadron or start to make a plan. Um, what I might suggest is looking at some of the programming in that building to say, is there a way where, right now, we're using six rooms for preschool? Could some of those preschools go perhaps to like a newly built Latimer and give us some more room at Squadron? So I think we need to look at the plan, um, over, you know, it's, it's not a one-year problem. It's a, it's, it's a bigger issue than that. But I do think that in addition to preschool, um, you know, could another ready, set, go room go over to Two Hills where there's already ready, set, go? Could we, could we look at some of that specialty programming to get out of Squadron to create more room? Thanks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the, um, on those numbers, did we, and maybe this is something you won't have till September, but is there a way to know, like, of all those kids who were distance learning last year, did they all come back or?
I, I, I'm going to have to get that, you know, to you in September. Um, some, uh, we definitely had, we had about twenty-four who chose homeschooling completely. And some of those who chose homeschooling and not distance learning, um, continue to choose homeschool. Um, on the distance learning kids, um, I'm going to have to dig a little deeper to get to, to get you, uh, the information on that.
And then I think this is your next slide, but I'm getting at is that, you know, did we, those kids, are we seeing a huge kindergarten or a huge first grade?
Yeah. There's going to be a kindergarten theme. Don't, don't review my themes.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So kindergarten, kindergarten, we, we talked about it in, when I did this report during budget season. And I said the, the unknown factor is kindergarten, and that's what proved to be true. So, um, on the next slide, you can see where these were the summer enrollment changes that caused us to add teachers. So you look at some of them and go, this isn't more than a couple of students. Um, but it takes it above a threshold. So Central First Grade was just, that's the one that was just far off. That was early in the summer. Our original projection said maybe we can get away with two teachers in that left-hand column. But by the time we were done, there were fifty-four. That's clearly three classes of eighteen kids each. Some of these are just a few students added. But if you said Central School, third grade, and fifty-three students, if you only had two teachers, that would be twenty-six and twenty-seven kids. Parents writing to you, I know, very concerned about safety and COVID and distance in the classroom. And these are, uh, examples of where we had to say, yeah, we're going to add that teacher because it's the right thing to do, um, uh, this year. As opposed to, you know, in the past, often at some of the older grades, we would hold off. And if there was one kid above your guideline or two kids above your guideline, we'd say we're going to live with that for a year or two. But given, um, you know, what we're going to have with distances in classrooms and, you know, we erred on, on being able to add, um, that teacher. So, um, so Central School, you can see, I spoke about that. Three different grade levels, first, third, and sixth grade, all required a new teacher. And that hasn't happened in quite some time. Um, Squadron, kindergarten, the projection by Malona McBrum was just off. They said eighty-six kids and we got a hundred and that, almost every day, Laura Schellman brings me a new one. So, um, that number, I think, will be bigger than one hundred by the time we're set and done. And, um, Two Hills, second grade in July, um, it sort of held all summer through July with two teachers. And then, um, within one week, I had three new second graders move in and we were making another decision. Uh, and Latimer kindergarten, to do that kindergarten theme again, came in bigger than expected. I highlight the one in yellow to let the community know. We also look at it the other way, when we can get an efficiency from what was projected. So there's one where we actually said, here, we're going to, we're going to go with two teachers in this grade because, um, that's actually increased early in the summer. It had gone all the way down to forty. because that's actually increased early in the summer. It had gone all the way down to 46 students. And we sort of felt comfortable that even if a few move in, which happened, we aren't gonna be above your Board of Ed guidelines. So what this demonstrates is that while we added six new teachers, we took one away, so it's a net of five. And then the note on the bottom tells you that we also yielded some efficiencies with some resignations at the high school to kind of grab another FTE with a few eliminated sections. So when Amy asks me, what's the dollars and what's the net on this? It's a net of four teachers and that's where I think, well, that is where we're gonna open the year. I did a lot of talking and new teacher rotation today, so.
A lot of talking.
Here's the kindergarten theme that we talked about and I.
Neil?
Yes.
Give me Phil.
We have, I signed the last elementary teacher yesterday. So we have filled all of the classroom teacher positions. We have one halftime position in special ed remaining vacant and that is the only vacancy we have on the certified side. Great. Okay, kindergarten, you can see, I gave you a real historical arc here because I wanted you to see where we are in 2021. The projection for Malona McBroom was 290. So we were expecting a fairly large kindergarten based on the Malona McBroom projections. But what we actually got is even larger than they were projecting with, as of 2020, 309 kindergarteners. And why I gave you such a long historical arc is because you gotta go all the way back to that 2005, '06 era to see the last time we had that many kindergarteners in Simsbury. And if you follow where we've been over the last 15 years since then, you can see some numbers in 2011, 2025, 2013, 231, and then 2015 back to 225. So to be at 309, that's significant and we need to be paying attention to that. The, one of the things that happened too is that our kindergarten enrollment came in late. So if I, if you can imagine that just over a month ago, July 16th, I, as I say, I get these reports on a weekly basis. We had 270 confirmed. I went back and looked at my sheets to say, what was it a month ago? And a month ago was 270. So we added 39 kindergarteners since July 16th.
So you thought the projection was too high.
I thought the projection was off. They were wrong. And then.
Here it is.
Yeah, so Laura Schellman, now you need combat pay for registration. It's really been something, what we've been seeing up there or on top of it. But it has, it came, I think it's a little bit that when we do our normal census, when we were doing it in 2020, we knew we might be getting bad information. Like we didn't get as accurate information as we normally get. So it came very late. Even though Malona McBroom projected three kindergartens for Tuton and three for Central, I was sitting there in July going, hey, I think we're gonna be able to get away with two. And that, in no case where I thought we would be able to go lower in kindergarten. Did it, at the end of the day, proved to be true.
You think a lot of people just held back and waited to see what was going on before they.
Yeah, I think we had a lot of people who didn't send young five-year-olds or just, you know, about to turn five-year-olds in a way they might have before.
We had a lot of people move to town too.
Yes.
I mean, a huge housing move. There's a lot of, I mean, so they had people move here.
Yeah.
Did you see a large jump in first grade as well, people who maybe kept their kindergarteners home last year?
No, it, it really played out with the kindergarten, yeah. Okay, and then this is just the typical class size that I include for your October 1 report. This is obviously the, the August 20th version of this, so it's a, it's a snapshot in time. I'm sorry that in our, I don't know how that's showing it, but it's covering up sixth grade at Central and it shouldn't do that because that's the last class we added. So if you didn't get the note from Beth Hennessy and your sixth grade parent at Central, we added a teacher. It's taken care of. You don't have to contact us anymore. And that was the last one that we added. So as I said earlier, what you can see now is three in every grade at Central, quite unusual. Latimer is now at four sections in kindergarten and second grade. Thank you, Maggie. But that sixth grade section where we were actually lower than expected. And Squadron with the five kindergartens is kind of what you should note there. Terrifil will remain with two sections at each grade. And Tuton has sort of moved itself into that three in every grade level except for sixth grade as well. So this represents 108 elementary teachers, which when I show you where that is historically, it's the highest we've been in quite a few years. Okay, so that, that's where we stand.
Quick question, Neil. Since I'm fairly new still to the board, the board. What were pre-COVID numbers for the typical sized classroom again?
So our, our.
What were the guidelines?
K through two, K through two is 18 to 22 students. And I would say we averaged maybe just below 20 on a class when you broke that down across the five schools. And then the guidelines for grades three through six are 21 to 25. And we typically average between 22 and 23 students per.
And that was all before COVID?
That was all before COVID, yeah.
It's not that much smaller?
No.
No, and these are.
Maybe one to three kids less per program. We're still kind of in those.
Yeah. And right now, the only cohort, and this goes to your question, Jeff, we have another one that we can break out. Where, if you look at second grade at Squadron, our guideline is up to 22. And we had some move-ins last week that put some of those classes at 23. I really don't have a space to put another second grade. I mean, we're not gonna break it out because when that class moves to third grade, the class size guideline will change for that class. So we'll monitor that class all year, but those two kids are not causing us to add another section. Mostly because there's nowhere, there's nowhere, I mean, if we started really jamming people in, we could probably do it, but it's not, it's not something.
And this may speak to what you were telling me earlier about maybe just moving a street here or there, but just the, I'm looking at the Squadron fifth and sixth.
Yeah.
And then the lot or sixth with 25 kids. Boy, that feels like a lot to me. Is there any thought about addressing that or?
Well, what we see with Squadron is that at the upper grades, they tend to add a kid or two before they, but you know, our hope is that those classes, I mean, obviously the sixth grade will be moving out of the school. And then, you know, we're gonna have to really, we, we may end up with five, sixth grades next year with just a few kids added into there. So that's something we'll have to look at.
Yeah.
But for this year, Neil, you're comfortable because those, those class sizes are gonna remain at 24, 25?
I can't promise that. There's a week to go, but at this point, I would not make a different decision.
So would we add support to this?
So typically what we've done if a class goes over that guideline
Yeah.
is that we've added tutorial support to that grade so that the teachers have sort of an intervention for some kids. If it, so right now, I mean, it's sort of too late to hire a teacher at this point.
No, I understand. It's just that we added it central for similar numbers. So now I, I'm just, with parody, I, I, that's my, my question is just, is it a space limitation?
It's a space limitation.
So, so then it becomes a support situation for us?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so any other questions about enrollment before Sue and I take team this next portion? Okay, we wanted to go through just a few things here about, obviously you'll remember our opening plan last year was an extensive document about all the strategies and procedures that we had to place. And this can be, given the communication we put out to the community, this can be much, and a year of experience of coming back to school. We just want to be, quickly go through this and see what questions you might have. So I'm gonna take the first couple of slides here. Certainly, we've had some talk tonight already about masks. The governor's order is obviously through September 30th. I think some of the speakers mentioned that. And, and our health, public health partners are the DPH, which is an eight o'clock morning call every Tuesday with superintendents. And the Farmington Valley Health District, which is a 10 o'clock call every Tuesday with superintendents. And tracking the data and where the case rates are taking us and, you know, understanding where that goes. I will say, I want to clarify one thing that came out in public comment. Students do not need to wear masks outside. So we will clarify that with principle. That is as clear as day in the guidance. So if there is a school having students wear masks outside, please, please contact me and I'll talk to that principal. But we went over this with our principals. Like that may have been happening in the spring. I think we had some overzealous playground monitors. But the, the issue from the state is kids do not need to wear masks outside.
Even for seed programs?
Uh, even for seed programs, yeah.
So going at Terrifil.
So can you contact me outside the meeting?
Sure.
Thanks. And the other one, I, I mean, and we do also build in mask breaks for kids. So that, that is part of our protocol and I just wanted to make sure I covered those points. Been a lot of news about vaccines in the last week for teachers. And obviously the DPH is promoting vaccination as kind of the best way to return to normal. But I'm not gonna get into the reasons and politics of vaccines at this point. The Farmington Valley Health District has asked us to potentially host a clinic for students in September. So that's something that we will be finalizing in an updated call with that. The governor's new mandate for teachers. I can tell you that this has taken kind of a squiggly turn in the last couple of days in that Shippin and Goodwin, who represents the superintendent's group, feels that the executive order was not very precisely written. We believe the intention of the governor was to say that teachers either have to be vaccinated or submit to weekly testing, okay? But the way it was written in two different parts of the executive order, Shippin and Goodwin is right, is it's not crystal clear. So they've actually asked for clarification to make sure that the, that that was the intention of the executive order. And until then, we're, we're waiting for that clarification. But the assumption is that then we would collect, required to collect from all employees their vaccination status and their vaccination cards to know who would then be subjected to testing. We also on a voluntary basis are gonna ask families of 12 and older to let our school nurses know for purposes of contact tracing, were you vaccinated? And if so, please let our school nurse it. Please answer, it'll be a very simple form to fill out to say, you know, have you been vaccinated? And therefore, when we run a contact tracing process, we will know who has already. We, we, we think that is a pretty high percentage based on the data we get from the Farmington Valley Health District. And it will be helpful to confirm that with our families.
You know, I think the state's gonna put out an FAQ within like 48 hours on the vaccine.
I did not hear that. That's good. Okay, obviously, we continue to put in all our communications. I think the biggest reason why we succeeded last year is because people took seriously the notion that you shouldn't come to school when you're sick. And when you are symptomatic, that is when we're asking you to, you know, take, take a day or two and make sure that it's not something that's, that requires a test or that is, is going to be contagious. So we thank the community for its support with that. And that is true with staff as well and put a strain on our substitute system last year. But, you know, we made it through and we expect we'll make it through again. Hand hygiene was a major effort last year. I can tell you that all of the procedures around the sinks in the classroom, the washing of hands at the elementary level, and then the hand sanitizing. Maybe it became a routine that kids were used to to come in from recess. You come back from art or music. I mean, it, it was very much a routine in the school and that certainly is a process that will continue. The, the cleaning of our buildings, and I know we spent a lot of time on this last year typing about extra custodial support and overtime for custodians and disinfecting machines and things like that. And the state, early in the summer, made it very clear that what was, the recommendation for schools is go back to your standard level of cleaning. Like that is where, that is appropriate. There is a little bit of extra sanitation in bathrooms, nurses' office locker rooms, things like that. But that this notion of like intense COVID cleaning was not something that, the belief of the experts on this was that that was a highly effective strategy when the disease is airborne. And that this surface notion of transmission was not one that, that schools should be, if you're gonna be committing resources to something, you don't need to be committing it to that. So we have backed off a little bit. We will be maintaining that. It was actually just a, you know, one of those things that COVID, you fell into a good practice, like the notion of people being able to see a cleaning log that my room was cleaned by the custodian. That, that is a practice we will continue. The recommendations on social distancing have changed, but they've changed only in the setting of the classroom. So in the classroom, and I think it happened in about April, CDC started to say in a classroom, three feet of distance between students is sufficiently protective as long as those students are masked. So in a classroom, it's three feet and mask. In other settings, it remains, are you within six feet of a person for 15 minutes or more? So when we go to do contact tracing in the classroom space, the standard we're gonna ask is, you know, who are the kids sitting within three feet of that? That should be an extremely limited answer, given the way we are able to space our desks in the classroom. But that, that will be, and, and in terms of contact tracing, I'll merge into the next bullet. We expect that it will be far fewer students that we would, last year at an elementary level, if one kid in the second grade cohort had it, the whole group went. And the Farmington Valley Health District has said, we are not doing that anymore. We are not sending an entire group of 18 or 19 students home because one kid in the classroom had it. And if we do have to send quarantine, we do have to send the kids home for quarantine. The quarantine periods are shorter than they were last year. And you have a tech, you have a chance, if you wanna bring your kid for a test after just five days, that the quarantine could end after seven days. And so there's, we think we'll be quarantining fewer kids and that their quarantines won't last as long. And so that is all in conjunction with the Farmington Valley Health District. It will bring, I, we should have brought it tonight, but we have like a decision tree from the Farmington Valley Health District that this is how you go about doing this when it happens. And it's been a very useful tool. So that's my portion. I think I've had to sue here, but we can either pause and take questions on these topics or let Sue do her piece.
Okay, I'll work ahead. So I think Neil already touched upon the vaccination cards. As far as sharing that information, those details will be coming out from building principals in the coming days very, very soon. So more on that. If you have any questions, certainly you can reach out to your building principal or to Neil as our COVID liaison. It was mentioned in public audience, this concept of testing. And the testing that's being referred to here is for asymptomatic, by and large, unvaccinated children and staff. So this testing was being offered as an option for school districts. This testing would require parental consent. And the intention was really to address communities where vaccination numbers were low and case counts were high. That doesn't currently define our count. And in collaboration with the Farmington Valley Health District, we don't see any value added to this testing at this moment, so we are not moving ahead with that option. As far as distance learning, we've had some inquiries with distance learning be available to families this year as an option. It actually will not be. There is no longer that educational provision saying that distance learning could be an option for families. The one exception is. learning could be an option for families. The one exception is if there is a, a health district initiated quarantine. And what we're calling that is instructional access during quarantine. So we have very developmentally based targeted plans for our students in the case where our students do need to quarantine for K-two, for three-sixth, in grade seven through twelve. Uh if that was the case, you would be hearing directly again from building administrators and teachers as far as what that instructional access would look like. And then finally, related to distance learning, in the very envious decision-making, Superintendent Curtis had to make a decision regarding a snow day. One of his favorite decisions to make as superintendent, uh there is no longer the provision for a remote snow day. So if a snow day needs to be called for a weather-related incident, then it would fall under a traditional snow day. So no remote snow days. There is a committee uh at the state level that is looking at all of these components of distance learning, but this is the uh provision at this time. And then finally, for breakfast and lunch, the Simsbury Public Schools has continued to obtain a waiver from the USDA to provide meals, breakfast, and lunch at no cost to students and families. Uh we will be seeing a return of some of our popular, all current items, specifically uh at the middle school and high school. There are some fan favorites that will be reintroduced for purchase. So those are the other topics as related to mitigation and school opening. If there's any questions. Yes, Brian?
At the high school um for lunch. Um last year, my kids could eat in an auditorium or the Blue Gym or outside if it was warm enough. Where will they be eating this year?
So the tents are back. We actually uh purchased the tents instead of renting them anymore. So we um and uh uh Amy did great work to push me on that. Uh uh and the company that, that they're actually charging us this very nominal fee to store them. And then they're, the only reason they're down at the high school right now is because of the roofing project. So the tents are coming back. Um there will be some spaces outside the cafeteria um that, that students can use. Um and it's kind of going to be a monitor and adjust situation. Um but uh I think they're going to use the amphitheater. Um and I believe they're going to use the Blue Gym. Um on there, the, the change in the rotation of periods is causing them a little bit of uh complication with that. But the primary strategy um is outside um with the tents.
We like to call it al fresco dining.
And what about, what about at Henry James?
Tents also, there's two tents at Henry James. Um they also were able to, they, they sort of went a team in the cafeteria, a team outside, and a team in the gym. And that's sort of like the plan again as they go.
What about the elementary schools?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
The um, this, I just have a few questions. The soft openings that they did last year, will they continue that again?
We will. Um we found that to be very beneficial practice, Jen, from both student feedback, family feedback, and quite honestly, our teachers as well. So the concept of soft starts will certainly be into play as well as our very specific teaching to some of those social, emotional learning skills that were highlighted at some of our board event meetings last year.
And then um I didn't have just one question, sorry. Let's go ahead and start times at the elementary schools. And I think the high school did, and I'm pretty sure Henry James did. Are we doing, or is everyone coming at the same time?
They, they're gonna try to, uh I know Henry James has built in a few minutes at the start of the day. Um and the element, the feedback from the elementary principals by the end of the year was that we were doing it in fifteen minutes even with everybody coming. So they, they're gonna start the year with trying to get everybody there without a stagger, and they'll adjust if they need to.
Are we asking parents to drive again this year?
We are not asking parents to drive. Parents certainly have that option. But the way that we put our plan out last year saying, um, hey, we, we weren't asking you, given the challenges with buses. If you remember, the rules around buses were extraordinarily strict when the plan first came out. They made like buses a center of like what was being worried about. They've sort of backed off all of that. So none of our communications, last year, they said, if you can drive your kid, please do. And we've eliminated all that language. So we expect the buses to, we're gonna, so we're not, what most of the principals are doing are just um making, not, not so much middle and high school, but there's, they're doing um the assigned clusters of kids. So that if we do have to contact trace on a bus, we know that the K-one kids are sitting together, the two, three, you know, they're gonna, the typical hierarchy of the bus.
Hey Neil, just to piggy, I'm sorry, are you still going?
No, I can't. I just have two more when you're done.
Uh just to, just to piggyback on Brian's questions, how about the elementary schools?
For lunch?
For, yeah.
So um we're gonna, we're gonna use the cafeterias for the start of the year. Um principals and head custo- principals and head custodians have been out there marking seats and, you know, so we're trying to get to at least that three feet of space between um some, in some cafeteria setups, that's actually pretty achievable without much um changing of things. In others, it's um, um moving some tables around and add, uh adding some furniture in there. And plus, one of the things that we know kids liked, um you know, if we have a particular lunch wave at a school where there's a lot of kids in the cafeteria, we can take some kids outside to eat. I mean, we have that ability to do that on most days. Uh but they're not going to eat in their classrooms. That's, if we have to revert to that, that's an option we might take, but we don't think we'll need to.
Just let them get the mini maple pancakes first.
And to piggyback on Brian, is that the same for art and gym? They'll be able to go out?
Yes. So because all of this notion of contaminated service and touched items, which was a big uh concern in much of the state uh recommendations last year, all of those extra recommendations were don't use the common art room, don't use the common music room, and they backed off all of that as well. So our art rooms are open for business. Our music rooms are open for business, but you will still, because of singing, you will still see a lot of music teachers taking their classes outside. And that's a good thing. That's, that's a very good thing. The kids like it, the teachers, for the most part, like it. Um and they can spread them out to sing better um when they do that.
We have no wind instruments.
The wind instruments will be um back inside. They have something called a bell cover that they put over um the, like the end of the trumpet or the end of the clarinet. Um but because they aren't doing the large ensembles, at least for the start of the year, we're really talking about lessons, which really look like more like five or six kids that could be easily spread out in the classroom. So um uh that uh, what you're not gonna see, at least for the beginning, is like the whole fifth grade band or the whole sixth grade band. That'll be something that, based on the recommendations, we'll build up to later in the year if we can.
And other high schoolers typically have never, even pre-COVID, have never used, used their lockers. But does Henry Middle School does, are they allowed to use?
We have backed off all of that. Everybody can use their locker.
Great. Never advanced.
I'm done now. Give me a few minutes. I'll re-group.
So in June, I know that I had provided the, the board an update on our summer programming and to address every aspect of our students' learning for the summer, from our internet students to uh students at the high school. So I just wanted to provide a, a finer level of detail as to how that went. So maybe if you'd advance to the next slide, please. We in total had over two hundred students participate in our summer programming. And what this slide demonstrates is where those programs happened, the students served, and the program leaders. Uh adults came together to do a phenomenal job to provide great experiences for our kids, not only academic experiences, but really paying attention to where kids were at. Some of our students hadn't been in the physical building and ventured uh to the, the physical plants this summer. And I just want to thank our staff for that standing work. So we had at the high school um offerings for credit recovery, some content-based boot camps if students were feeling kind of uncertain about their world language skills or Algebra One. Um those are actually still occurring this week, which is fantastic. Uh we had some college visits that happened, some students that were uh proactively obtaining some credit at the high school level. Uh with our middle school students, our students uh worked on executive functioning. How do you prioritize tasks? How do you make sense of um the many things that you're being asked to do? And also some content-based review and even some great teaching. And then finally, one of our largest programs was uh for our elementary school students, led by a central school teacher, Kim Ashelman, and our director of elementary curriculum, Betsy Gonzalez. Just over one hundred students participating in that, uh certainly getting all in those academic skills, but some really cool, like camp-like focus and activities, just fun. So that was the summer programming. In a nutshell, again, very uh well-received, extremely successful. And we're hoping that these opportunities really uh start us off on a great foot with students. And they are excited and ready to come back to us next week because we are excited and ready for them as well.
So this was funded through the grant, correct?
Yes, it was.
All right, anybody have questions?
Actually, I have just one thing that wasn't on your slide. As a parent of a, a, a high schooler who participated in their strength and conditioning class, that, that, that was just a fantastic opportunity. Uh you know, that's, that's about eight, almost nearly eight weeks long amount of program. I just highly recommend and encourage uh that to take advantage of it to all parents. It's, you know, he, he, he loved it. And uh we'll undoubtedly continue it through the, through the years. So I just appreciate it.
I don't know the number, but that's a significant enrollment as well.
It was near, I think, they had two sessions and I would, I would.
Over a hundred.
At least a hundred.
Yeah.
I'll find out. Thank you. And, and I was, uh, was remiss in not mentioning that as well. So thank you for bringing that up, John.
All right. Hit that. We return to our second public audience. So if anybody would like to, Frank, thank you. You're welcome. Again, uh state name, their address, and.
Well, my name is John Gersman, seventeen hall hall. Hello, my name is John Gersman. People know me as Jack. I'm a rising junior at Simmsburg High School. I drove down here after tuning into the live stream, feeling like a lot of my voice heard in the community. Uh I'm involved with numerous clubs at Simmsburg High School, including the co-president and founder of the Simmsburg High School newspaper, The Trojan Times. I'm also very involved in the performing arts of Simmsburg High School. I'm a member of the MLK, MCT Committee, wonderfully advised by Mrs. Terrell, by Mrs. Terrell Lilia, Lola R. And I find the varsity tennis team. Aside from participating in activities and spending time with friends, and most importantly, in my opinion, I'm a student. This year, I'm enrolled in four AP classes and I'm a Simmsburg scholar. School is one of my favorite places to be. I'm one of those nerds who hate summer because I love learning so much. This year, I maintain straight A's. I wore a mask every single day. I wore a mask when I took my two week test this year. I never complained. Yes, masks might be slightly uncomfortable, but they are saving lives. I have an autoimmune disease, so mandating masks in our classrooms is directly protecting me. Some of my friends who have got COVID-nineteen still don't have a sense of smell or taste. Masks are a way to protect people that's uh like me and the people I love. Students could still carry COVID to the home and expose their parents who may be immunocompromised if masks are not mandated. COVID-nineteen is real. The Delta variant is real. If you don't want to wear your mask yourself or want your chair, I don't want to wear a mask, then wear one right now. So hopefully sometime in the foreseeable future, you will not have to. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you for being brave enough to come down here and speak out on your side. I know that may not be a good deal, especially for younger persons. So good job. I may not agree with you, but we all sit around here. I love that we can debate respectfully on that.
I appreciate that.
I just have a, a quick question on recess for elementary schools. If we can, the classes are able to cobangle it all?
Do you want me to answer that, Susan?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hi Bobby, how are you?
Long time no see.
Yeah, it's good to see you. Uh yes, so what they're going to do at the elementary level, so while they're in the cafeteria, since that's kind of a new frontier for us this year, outside of the classrooms, they will be asked to sit at a table in the cafeteria with their class. But once they get outside, the fourth graders can all play on the playground together. They don't have to stay in their cohort the way they did last year. If there's indoor recess, they are going to be asked to stay in their cohort, but on the outside, we're back to normal.
Hi, my name is Lori Boyko. I live at fifteen oh first grade. Um I'm presenting sort of the older edge of the demographic here, I think, because I have um three students who have gone through Simmsburg High School, through the whole Simmsburg school system. And my youngest is now a freshman, one or two have graduated. Um I am not in favor of having everybody wear masks, but I do want to say from my perspective, I spent the entire year through December washing every grocery that came into my house. So I am not, you know, some kind of rebel that says it's non-existent. Um and in fact, my freshman would probably prefer to wear a mask because I think he's developed some anxiety around this whole COVID thing. So um that concerns me that he hides behind the mask and is afraid of things or afraid to go out. And um I don't want to continue to perpetuate that fear. We've heard from many parents expressing their reasons why our children should not be required to not wear masks. I don't need to reiterate all those. I do want to share a very important statistic that I have been delving into. And this is from the CDC. And this is for all children ages zero to seventeen from January of twenty twenty through August eighteen of twenty twenty-one, so almost twenty months. And in that time, three hundred and sixty-one children, zero to seventeen, have died with COVID. Not necessarily, and this is stated on their website, as a result of COVID. So they died with a positive COVID diagnosis, but they might have had with a Westoma, they might have had been a heart accident, they just simply had tested positive for COVID. By comparison, seven hundred and ninety-two children died with pneumonia without COVID in that same period. Reason that statistic I think is important is because it took a lot of the fear from me away because I was terrified for my kids all this time. And knowing some of the data made it more acceptable to understand what was going wrong. And um it's really important to me that it was my understanding that we were teaching, and I think Simmsburg does a great job of this, children to think critically rather than to teach them what to think.
Thirty seconds.
Our educators should be teaching our children how to research and fiercely defend their conclusions with reliable citations and data. I thought we taught them to look at both sides, but ultimately follow the evidence. At what point do we stand up and say the emperor has no corpse?
So I just had questions. I just wanted to say thank you again to the break room for saying that. Uh my husband, I actually just learned that my daughter has an autoimmune disease. My daughter, Jasmine, has an autoimmune disease. And it's been scary and it's been stressful for us. But that's why we have the vaccine, right? And that's why people can vaccinate themselves to protect themselves. And that's why we have the mask to, as I see you wearing, to protect yourself. It needs to be a choice. It cannot be mandated. Okay? And I'm living with somebody who recently had diagnosed, and it's scary. And I have a guy with you. And my daughter is saying. And my daughter is. I'm sorry, I'm saying, oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My question before was, you were talking about vaccinations, right? And contract tracing in schools? And you said that when you do contract tracing, you're going to be asking for people to identify if their children, 12 and up, are vaccinated. And when you're doing this contract tracing, if they are vaccinated, you're not going to reach out to them? Did I misunderstand that?
No, so I can answer that if you want me to. So asymptomatic vaccinated people are not required to quarantine. So in saying, in saying to a Millsmore High School student, were you vaccinated, if we have the backup in the nurse's office to say, yes, that student was vaccinated, as long as they're asymptomatic, there is no quarantine period required for that.
Okay, well, you are going to contact them.
We will call those.
Okay, because I was thinking you weren't, and I was thinking that was unfair. I didn't understand that.
We won't call them. We'll call them only if they were identified as a close contact.
Okay.
If they're identified as a close contact, you'll get a call to say, you are a close contact. You should monitor your kid, but there's no required quarantine.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the only other thing too, when you were talking about staying home when you're sick, my daughter, last year, we had allergies. We all have allergies. And she was sent home twice. And again, I feel like we're mitigating the parent's responsibility here because as a mom, I know she has allergies. I understand it was a scary time. And I did have to quarantine my daughter once last year for contract tracing. But she had a running nose, and they sent her home, and they made me quarantine her. And I, we went out, we went to, we went sledding, we went to Friendly's, we had a Great Mommy Daughter Day. So I'm just curious, like, when you're, when the child is sick, what are the guidelines of the nurse saying? She has to go home, somebody has to pick her up? Because it happened twice where it was completely unnecessary for her.
Well, I think that's going to be up to the nurses' call as they see the kids and how they present in school. And there may be some caution used on that. But if you have further information, I'm sure you could email Health Services to try to get a full classification.
Okay, so again, as a parent, I don't have any say in that.
I think you could email Health Services to get a better classification on what they're going to do this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can ask, Neil, I did look at the mask exemption policy, and I'm just curious as to, it's not really clear what, but currently, she's in daycare and she has an exemption for speech. Kathy Markle said she's tired, and we have not done any follow-ups with that. I don't really want to spend her, because she's going to, she's going to backslide, but I don't know who to, how to get around that. And it's not technically official. Any other things I'd like to add? This is Glenn Lamont, deaf interpreter, and she takes off her mask to speak with her hands. And my kindergartner is not going to follow that motion.
Neil mentioned the high school. How long has that been out? How long?
The rain has not helped. I can tell you, roofing projects and rain are not a good match. But they are expecting the substantial completion of the project by this weekend.
And do we know about the bleachers?
About what?
Bleachers.
The bleachers are not, the referendum passed on them, the construction will be next summer.
There's always a delay. That's why we try to explain that. There's always a delay from referendum to actual, oh, build. Okay, okay. With that, I would take.